...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Four minutes on the track, please. Motion to approve, minutes or seconds?
Second.
Second in the other discussion. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion to carry. Two agenda, need changes?
There was just the one that approved the special event, beverage permit.
We gotta do this. Motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion to carry. Visitors or delegation, anybody that's not in the team you're on, so. Somebody else, okay. Dean, more township, bridge discussion. Which, what section are we in?
It's the one between section fourteen and fifteen on Eightieth Avenue. And I don't know why it took us long to figure it out, but we just all realized that it's only, it's marked as a twelve-ton bridge. And it, I don't think there was ever even, maybe I'm wrong Kevin, but a couple of years ago, there wasn't even a sign on that bridge, was there?
No.
It's, I don't know, twelve ton, you can't have a tractor over it. So I, I'm just here to see if there's anything, call it to your attention, see if there's something we can or cannot do with it, because that needs to be, personally needs to be better than that, because.
It's in the northeast quarter of that fifteen.
Yes, between fourteen and fifteen.
Has that always been a twelve-ton bridge, Kevin?
Um, the report we got back from two thousand fourteen, the highest we can go was nineteen tons. And we got a package from the DOT not too long ago, I think last week or last meeting, that that's more than I have to re-sign. So we could sign it at nineteen tons, which still isn't enough for what Dean needs, but, you know. So we need, I mean, the bottom line, we need to think about doing something.
The state's in charge of the inspection then?
Yeah, DOT, yeah, DOT.
This is a fairly wide bridge, wide enough for a photogrid tractor.
Oh, no. It's probably, well, it's not forty feet, but it's, because you can move over, but it's gum by meters, but it's, it's all of thirty feet, I bet.
Okay.
It's wide, it's an old wooden.
It's wood?
It's old wooden.
Yeah.
I think that's why it's so low, is because of the wood.
Structure. State has inspected this, how long ago?
Two thousand, November of fourteen, like, six months, whatever.
Do we have any report that they followed?
It just says, you know, we can post it up to nineteen tons. And it says that the steel girders are badly rusted. That must be why it's so low.
Nobody from the colonies looked at it?
Not in the last six months, though.
Six months ago, they didn't get looked at, or no?
No, we never looked at it, no.
You never, you had never looked at it?
I've looked at it, but ten years ago, probably, I don't know, ten years ago, looked at it. Yeah, I know what it looks like underneath there, but.
So we don't know if our steel deteriorated a lot, or?
Well, that's what the report says, is the girders are badly rusted. But I assume that's the reason why it's rated so low.
Big bridge, too.
Yeah, it's a double span.
I draw up and marked up, it's foot eighty-five and ninety feet long, is the length.
It's double Edmore Coolie.
Yeah, it's the whole Edmore.
It's after, it's after the Edmore and the lot come together.
And it probably got, what, four concrete pillars underneath?
Yeah, I guess I can't, yeah.
It's either four, it's either four or five, including the sites where it's up to the beach shore.
It would take a bridge, put it that way, culverts won't work there because there's just too much water.
That's a mayor or anything?
It's, yeah, it's, well, the next closest one is what, three miles to Belgrade Road?
West.
West.
Yeah.
And the other way is three mile, or four miles, three miles to the Rorville Road.
Oh, why is it Belgrade Bridge, it's much better, isn't it?
That's a, that's a cement bridge, though, isn't it, Belgrade?
Yeah.
I think that one's pretty new.
Okay, going east, it's how far deep?
It is, well, from the bridge, it's four mile, we gotta go back south two and then three to the, three to the Rorville Road, and then so all the way around, it's like eight miles, eight to ten miles, if you were gonna go around.
There is a township road in there, but it's not maintenance.
Yeah, it's a minimum maintenance one.
Eighty-nine in there is there, but it's not a very good road, right?
You're still gonna go up across the Cooley then, right, on the township road?
No, if you go, if you go from their place all the way over to county, you're gonna go north, you're gonna go over the culverts and then go all the way, all?
But the, the, the one he's talking, the one east of our place, that's a minimum maintenance one, and when you get to the north end of that, you gotta cross the Cooley.
Yeah, you gotta.
Going back west, you don't, you can get north without crossing it, but.
Yeah, and that bridge in there is very, that's not in better shape than the other one, probably.
That's a pretty good bridge.
That one's actually, was a new one. Want to say late, I don't know, time flies, but must've been late seventies, early eighties?
Probably, yeah.
Probably new, but, I don't know.
So that one's fine, that, that's one upstairs.
And that one doesn't have any weight restrictions on it, I don't believe, only there's even a sign on that one, so that one's fine, but it's the one going the other way.
Don't care, Belgrade has nothing on it?
No, you can take legal loads over that one, too.
The problem is, is once you get to it.
Can't turn around.
You can't get, you can't get turned around, so it's like, you know. And we had a guy last spring that brought fertilizer in there from the north, and he got to the bridge and saw the sign panicked, well, he's pulling, he had double trailers, so he couldn't, you know, there was no, there was no backing up, there was no nothing, so he, he did it, because we, you know. Up until now, we do it all the time, until we finally realize there's a twelve-ton sign there.
Well, I guess we'd better get some signs up there, people knowing that there is a nineteen-ton bridge ahead.
Yeah, we made the signs, we just upped them, but it's still not enough for a load of time, I mean.
No, no. I'd love to have people be aware of it, and.
Right, yeah, we've done that part, or are going to be doing that part.
Another thing is, if someone does fall through, who's?
Well, we don't have any legal advice here today, but I imagine.
If you went past the sign, I'm assuming you were on the one.
I don't know how to answer that, I don't know. I don't know, culverts won't work. But it's that long a bridge, is that?
It's a quite, it's a big bridge.
Yeah, when it's going in the spring, it's a lot of flow through there.
And at one, when, was it ninety-three or ninety-seven, when the flood was, you know, the floods were going through, that was one of the only north-south roads still open between two eighty-one and one.
Yeah, Rorville was shot.
Rorville, all of the highway that was going over there, and it was going over the Webster Highway, and it was, but that bridge, that bridge was still above water for most of that. So it's a, it's a big bridge, and there's a lot of water that goes through there.
Once you get on the, once you get up to the section line there, then you either gotta go east or west, correct?
Yes.
Don't blame that one. Kevin, you got any ideas?
I guess, went into the federal highway for replacement, it's a three-year process, but does need to land, so I don't know, I mean, trying to look in, just throw a number out there, a million or a million and a half dollars for the bridge, so. In our federal dollars, probably, right now, maybe two, three hundred thousand, so. But with the environmental process and the design time and build time, it's a good, probably a good three years old before it's completed. The environmental stuff is what really takes a long time.
Well, you know, if the state's looking at it this way, and they're putting load limits like that on it, I guess we're gonna have to start that process.
It's gonna happen someday, probably the earlier we get started, the better. It's just gonna keep deteriorating and keep getting worse, so.
But then, I guess, we get turned on by the feds at least once, I suppose.
Possible, they're always looking for bridges, the problem with this one is it doesn't make the sufficiency rating to qualify for. So we either have to ask them to come out and re-inspect it to get the sufficiency rating down, or we'll qualify for replacement, or so there's a lot of hoops we have to jump through, so.
In other words, the qualified, what do you mean by sufficiency rating?
They rate them through all the criteria, and if it gets below, is it fifty? I think it's below fifty percent, and this one's at sixty-four point nine or something.
So the bridge actually has to be worse than it is, more re-qualified.
It'll take a couple loaded semis, though, it should take care of it.
A lot of times, we can beat them off.
Does the, does the state have any funds that they have available to do bridges, things like that? I don't have the number of a program, but.
I guess we can ask.
What would Brian Zuchs tell us?
The first thing he's gonna tell us is get it re-inspected, so we can get the sufficiency rating adjusted.
And the state would do, the state would, you know, because we better start that process, then, you know. What would be the second thing he tells us? Get in line, or?
Yeah, get in line for funding.
I hope they had all the available bridge funds spent this year. But it's, it must be a hand allocation, I don't know how much it is, but.
I'm glad you came in, Dean, and started the process. It's gonna be a process, we didn't see that.
I've probed by it about six times this spring and never realized it was even a twelve-ton bridge, because I'm just so used to driving over it, that all of a sudden I went, actually, the law noticed it was already buried.
True.
He's like, when did they change that bridge to twelve tons, and we all went, I don't know. Then we went and looked at it, because it was like.
You haven't been underneath it and looked, you know?
I was fishing off it a couple weeks ago, but, the kids, but I never paid any attention underneath of it, no. There's a couple of spots in the middle of it where it looks like the decking may have, be a little bit wider, because the gravel's falling, and you can kick gravel down through the decking boards. So I don't know if that's part of the problem, or what, but it's, I don't know.
If I get the sufficiency rating down, I think we can start.
Yeah, and you can see those, I mean, you, you can feel those when you drive over them, and they're so, but it.
The other thoughts?
We better get the signs up.
Well, it, it probably, if it's, it's gonna take three years, there needs to be something, like, you know, right north of where Matt lives, there on the south end, or something. Because if you get up that road, there's no turning around, once you've gone past that old, that old pelly farm from the south. And once you turn the corner going to the south from the north, it's pretty tough to get back out of there, too, so. And you don't see that until you get, I'd rather have a forty-ton bridge myself, but that's just, you know. But it, for, until that happens, or if it doesn't ever happen, it, it does need to be marked better somehow. Because there's no turning around once you get to it.
Kevin got the signs ready, so we'll get them up in appropriate places. We'll just have to try to carry on from here and start the process, work on getting the reading down and.
Is there a sign you can put up before you get down it and find out you can't get over it? Is there a sign you can put up at the corner somewhere, so that you don't have to turn up? I mean, that has to be done same time.
There's not a standard sign.
There's no standard sign that says, warning, bridge ahead, maximum?
No, we would have to make something like that, or a special order, something like that.
Well, we'd probably better get that done, too.
Any other comments? Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention. We'll carry on from there.
Okay.
Thank you. Kevin?
All right, we'll start with updates on our road projects. Ramsey, can I tell what Paul told us?
I guess, pretty close to tunnel letter, I guess we contacted him and let him know that the load restrictions we were coming off, which I guess he probably already knew that, but, I wish, we had heard it and didn't see it closed at anywhere yet, so I guess that's what that's at. Get all the rain, it's, even with the load limit's off, we're not gonna be charging time until it's ready to haul on. And on the phone this afternoon, he suggested running a little truck up and down the road a few times, and to see at what point it would be, it would make sense to put load of trucks on it to build the rest of the road, so I guess we'll accommodate that and work with him to decide when that might be. And it might be this week, he's, I guess he was trying to push to get us to, I'm not sure it's time until next week. I'm not, I guess, I can't really see how we'd do that just arbitrarily without looking at the condition of the road itself, and the pit entrance, so. We'll just keep working with them, as far as we'll, let it get going, because you got twenty and a half days left, working days left, and after that, it's thirty-one hundred dollars a day, so.
Do you don't feel it would be a problem, Paul, getting it done for him, I mean, you should have it?
I don't know if they're, if they were having that up, but I guess each phase will take them, I guess we worked with them a little bit, on to make them use, fill topsoil in next to the rip route, and not have a, not use borrow for all of that, so they, it'll save them having one finished pass on the grade going in between there, so that will speed things up for them, that maybe saves them a day, I don't know. I'm not sure what else they can do. If they got all the materials up there already, I mean, they're gonna do it as fast as they can, they wanna get out of there, too. But I don't know, I wouldn't be surprised if they're right up to the limit on time.
All right, they did, they did everything they could to try to make sure that what they got done is in good condition to get going this spring, so by judging on the rest of the roads out there, there's still a lot of stops, spots, and frost boils that haven't firmed up yet or anything, so I don't think it's in our best interest to drive on that road if it's gonna hurt. So I'd like to see you work with them on that.
Yeah, I totally do the same thing, and I guess the main issue was that we sent them a couple emails, got a whole lot of, like, explanation, and we kind of got this stuff in the phase, and we were just trying to get my heads up. So I don't know, I'll just try and get them a phone call instead from here on, I guess.
I had talked to Greg, too, and he said if he has to, he'll work fifteen-hour days, I mean, if he wants to get it done, get paid, too, you know, so.
What's he got for tons each left to put on there, there's a lot of tons up there.
Yeah, I don't know, and I don't have to ask another thing, but.
It's all on site.
About a million dollars worth of work.
How much?
About a million worth of work's left to do, so. Mostly that's rock, and he's got it all up there, and the gravel's all up there, and toward the other.
So go fast.
Yeah, once it gets, once it gets in good shape, they'll, they'll get moving on it. But like right now, the pit entrance is so wet and muddy that we don't wanna drag that stuff onto our new gravel anyway, so. I think it was more a miscommunication than an emergency for them, I guess, so. So, order with them, get them going as quick as we can.
Anything else on ten?
Well, maybe they're on the little field stuff they can't add at time, taking out their berms and their road control stuff that they don't need anymore, so. No, we're not, not charging time for that, so, working with them, trying to get as far ahead as we can.
Any more questions on ten, then? Truck route, phase one. I don't know, did you talk to Greg about that at all this week or last week? I haven't thought about that one, anyway.
No, it's up, I guess the only thing that was holding them back was the load limit's on Highway twenty, north of two, and those are off now, so.
We're anticipating we'll try and get ten, mostly down the, we have a small crew working on this one, but.
What's going on up there on the north side of it?
Our utilities are relocating, there's a water line going in, I think it was, was it NODAC that was in there doing their underground power? They're eliminating the pools on the north side of the road and putting it underground all the way from two to serve those three farms. And Otter Tail, I guess, we had a utility meeting with close some of all the utilities early this spring, and, you know, all working on it, starting it down.
That is water in line, yeah?
Yeah, there's water in line, power, and then M D T C, I think. Theirs is borderline, whether we're gonna affect it or not, but they said basically that they're gonna redo their line as soon as we're done. If it, if they have a problem, they'll have to fix it temporarily, but they might, might not have an issue, they're just one spot where a couple hundred feet long, or within like a foot and a half of their line at the finish grade, so we'll see how that goes.
I think it's gotta be kind of the same situation with M D U, once we're done, they'll put a loop in for, just for, for future use, so theirs, so. But there's nothing there now, so they won't be in the way for what, M D U?
Oh, okay. And the phone companies, they're, the reason they're holding off is they're gonna put in a whole new fiber optic line on the north side of the road. When it's all done, it feeds out to Pan, I think, a pretty major line, but theirs, and what they have now is just a twelve pair, or something, something small, anyway. It's fiber good, it's small, but if they have to patch it, they can.
Any questions on that part of the truck route?
Any other questions?
Phase two, we've got the change order for that now. There it is. With the pilot cars and everything taken out, and everything figured in, it's four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two ninety-two eighty-four cents for north-south phase two portion. And additional gravel on, two inches of gravel on the east west. So he, Greg has presented this change order, and we should sign that.
I guess, you know, it'd be more, make the operation on the main project more efficient, too, without having traffic on it, so this includes the road closure. And we revised the signing for that. Added two weeks to the contract to get the north-south stretch done, all we got to do is, so. I feel that there should be the revised inclusion date. And I guess we got up to a total of, I think we're twelve inches of gravel on the whole thing, aren't we?
Twelve?
It was ten or twelve. Ten or twelve, well, we were, the original plan was to get up to eight, and then we have, I guess I had figured that. We're at twelve now.
Oh, that's right, it is twelve.
It's a two-inch oil, because we, I, for some reason, I thought two, two inches of gravel is two hundred thousand, two inches of gravel is a hundred thousand, so.
So it is.
Yeah, four inches more on the, no, the original project was gonna be six, now it's twelve, one everything.
So it shouldn't be muddy.
Yeah, so we'll check up to that.
State was okay with that, that was the one?
Yep, they were okay, yes.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
Second. We have a motion and a second, approve the change order with truck route phase two, everything looks all right, Kevin?
Yes, yes, very happy.
Any other questions or discussion? David, hold on.
Yep, Ernest?
Aye.
Mike, Tom, Jeff, Paulson?
Aye.
Iceberg?
Aye.
From?
Aye.
And just an update on the railway, you wanna cover that real quick?
Uh, yeah, I guess we got two of them back, Scott Thompson and Corey Cannon, and we got three of them assigned back, and back from them, those are on my desk. Northern Plains, signed, printed there, original documents, and they actually donated that right away, with a little stretch of theirs. Care words, we had to get temporary construction easements from them for their approaches, and all their documents are back. And Landmark Investments, which was cool on Strad as a part there, we had to narrow that right away up to forty-five feet, and added a ten, fifteen-foot temporary construction easement, because they're gonna fence around their trees and want to be able to mow around them, we got that revised and back to them, and then they have signed and sent copies back. Electronic copies were switched to the original before we could record that, and then finish up the right way down to the tracks for that project.
So all the railways are placed?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was a good day.
Any other questions there on ten? Thing else, Kevin, on two?
Uh, no, not me. Ramsey eight, plans are done?
Yeah, I just went through the bid package, I'm gonna go through the plan one more time tomorrow morning, and then we'll, we'll have to bids. We'll get that for bids to you tomorrow, to get on the paper for Friday, the next Friday and Friday after, so it would be the fifth of June.
Right, bid opening the fifth of June.
At eleven.
So that puts us in between meetings again, I don't know if it comes to having a special meeting, we may do that, if, if you think it's gonna be necessary. This is for Ramsey eight, now by law. Again, bid opening is June the fifth, so we'll let you know if we need to have a special meeting. And right now, we're not anticipating it, but depends on the contractor, who the contractor's gonna be, if they wanna start right away, or that type of thing.
Okay, any questions on eight?
Okay, Ramsey nine, I'll let you come up on two, that one's getting complicated, go ahead.
Okay, I guess we were originally planning on bidding the culverts and getting as much of the pit left overlay done this year as what we, as we could. Looks like the culverts themselves are gonna be costing up to use up the seventy-two twenty-one oh three funds. And since the, the new hospital eleven seventy-six funds aren't, aren't available until after the first of the year, or after February first, I think it makes sense to go ahead and just do the culverts this year, leave them gravel in there like we did before on M Z E, let's see if that held up pretty well. I guess we've sized the culverts, all, all three of them are quite a bit bigger than what was there, on the ones that were failing. The ones over there, Edmore Cooley, instead of being two ten-foot arch culverts, it's now gonna need to be a box culvert. I guess in the estimate, I'd figure about two hundred and ten thousand for that location, and it's gonna be more like three hundred, so it wasn't a huge change, I guess, overall, the size of the project, but it's still, when you go to the box culvert, then that's gonna take us a little longer to get that in, too, because we gotta start building it.
Call for a loan.
Bidding the pre-cast, gonna take some, you know, months or so to get those ready, so. That one looks like the earliest we'd probably be able to get it awarded, be the first meeting in August. Takes us about, not to plan, but we gotta advertise for three weeks, so that's just a result of them. So we should be able to finish the culverts this year in gravel, and then bid a separate project next year for the, just to patch over the, like, some overlay.
And at that point, we could use our eleven seventy-six dollars.
I'm over a hundred percent, there's no, we'll match on that, so.
So we'll probably save money then, along with, by leaving it gravel for next this year?
Worth thinking, plus the, the, the idea that we can't receive those eleven seventy-six funds until February, that comes into play, too, but bidding of those two projects, we're thinking will probably save money, because they won't know what their oil prices are in November, or in August, I mean, that type of thing. Or if we wait till February, March, whatever that date is, they're bidding asphalt, they'll know what their, what prices will be.
And I guess we're anxious, we could be, you know, we could bid it late in the year, you know, like November this year, or, you know, February, January, February, whenever. We wouldn't be able to clear, get it under contract, basically till the funding's available, so it makes sense to hold off.
So can we get it out, but not awarded?
Well, yeah, under contract, I guess we could, we could have a contract. Isn't that what he said?
I have my question, exactly.
He's probably gonna wait until February, just so we don't miss something, I think.
Yeah, they wanna mess it up.
You think the culvert money's gonna be served money, then, is that what we're using there?
Uh, yes. Twenty-one oh three money, yes.
What's in there right now?
What do we get?
Two, for dollars each, or for size of the culvert?
Oh, there was one, the last one was a twenty-four inch, then there was another twenty-four inch close by. Um the total between the two needs to be two thirty-sixes or two forty-twos, but if we just put, do one location, so I don't have to dig up one side, we're just gonna put in the two thirty-sixes. Just round metal, metal covered culverts there. Then the middle one, that section over there had more hooey itself, is is currently a ten by seven or eight foot arch, two of them, right next to each other. And this, and the, this one will be a double ten-foot by nine-foot box, eight feet of it you need for clearance, and then a foot below that is, doesn't add much to the cost, but then you can count the eighth area underneath it for mitigation.
Well, and mitigation.
They're still letting us do that, I think this is probably what might be last year, we can get away with doing it that way, but uh it's.
And then the third, that's the one that's gonna be a precast and it's gonna take the longest to get ready to go.
Like big box culvert?
Yeah.
And we were figuring out they got bidding all three of them together as one project, right, because they need the same kind of equipment to do all of them. And then the further east one by Hooters is uh currently a seven-foot by five-foot arch. And uh we're gonna put in two fifty-four inch round culverts at that location. And uh that won't increase the flow a whole bunch, or help the low flows, but not greatly increase the capacity of that. It was a twenty-eight square feet before, now it'd be thirty-one, so.
Anything else on nine then? You're more or less designing that yet, huh?
And the, like the thin left overlay plans and the patching, I mean, that those won't take that long to design, those are quick to put out, it's just the, the design of the box itself. And then uh bidding of that and then building of the box, so it's gonna take some time.
Okay.
A little, uh one more thing on nine, our chip seal job, I did talk to the uh chip seal contractor and ask him if he would be okay with moving the project down on four south of seventeen, between seventeen and eight, which adds a five-mile haul. Five miles further from the old project, from that nine, and he said that he would do it for an additional dollar, a ton for for the hauling, which adds up to thirty-five hundred dollars. The original bid was three hundred and eleven thousand two hundred, and he's adding thirty-five hundred to move the project to down the road. So I thought that was a really good deal, but uh we should probably have some kind of a motion to go ahead with that change in the project to include that road. It's only, it's the lower one percent added to the project.
We don't wanna do it up at nine, do you, of these culverts all the time?
Correct, yep. So basically, we're gonna move that chip seal job from nine to four going south. So that was how the motion agreed to move that, and that and that additional thirty-five hundred dollars.
When was the last, when was the last time that was chipped seal?
Uh this four will come up the following year, like next year.
It's supposed to be next year, so it's due a year early.
Yep, exactly.
I'll say.
And second, your motion is second on that motion. Special word thirty-five hundred dollars increase. And you got it, you put all your yard?
All your yard for hauling, yeah.
Thirty-five hundred in there, oh, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Ice Lord? Olson?
Aye.
Laiwon?
Aye.
Hortons?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Anything else on nine?
No, unless somebody got another question. That's it. And then the next thing on the agenda is they need to order a load of ore oil, and it costs approximately nineteen thousand dollars. That's what we use for cracks in, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ardenz?
Aye.
Laiwon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Ice Lord?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Kevin?
And then the weight limits, uh course, are off already, but I didn't, I didn't know when they'd be coming off, so. And I have one more thing, I don't know, is there anything else you wanna add, Paul?
I guess on nine, the wetland drainage will be on tomorrow on the field, so.
On Ramsey County ten, we're, well, first three miles off of the state highway where we milled that and it's still got the strips on the shoulder and a couple spots in the center, I contacted a guy that grinds that stuff up and asked him, what would it cost us to do, grind that up by the hour? And he just roughed out an estimate for me, about twelve thousand dollars to do those three miles, three and a half miles, wherever it is. But he said he wanted to look at it to make sure, just to give you a heads up for now, but uh might have this in the works of grinding up those shoulders and those spots through the center for twelve thousand dollars, that's what he's thinking it'll cost, but he wants to come and look to make sure. So just a heads up for now.
Yeah, the next meeting, do you have an idea?
Uh depends on what he gets here, if he can. Just something to think about for now.
I thought the whole limits were still on point with the papers that I guess you're getting with me?
We have north, maybe.
Yeah, we have like painting border, it is.
Okay, but not, not down here?
No. We're good.
We're off here.
I think they went off Monday.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay, nothing else, Kevin?
That's all I have.
Paul, nothing?
Yours.
David? Thank you. With that, we're done finished, the human resource update.
Nothing new from the Association of Townies, so sorry. Go with the next.
Did you get the answer on bench, Kelly?
No, you know what, I forgot to call them, I'll call her and ask.
Okay, very good. Okay, review of information on Ivan equipment?
I sent you guys out the information on the five hundred and seven hundred. And um the seven hundred is a teaching, which they probably use once a year through N D S U extension. And the five hundred is basically where you can't teach, you know, like if you have somebody here teaching a class, all the other Ivan sites can watch the class. Where the five hundred, you wouldn't be able to teach, but for once a year, I don't know if it's necessary or not. Bill's knew um the person that's going to be overseeing N D S U extension, stopped in his name, I don't know what was his first name, last name, it's Gray. Jim Gray, stopped in and I was bringing this to his attention, and he said, asked when the board was meeting, and I said today at five-thirty, and he was gonna get back to me, but I haven't heard from him. But we need to get this ordered because of the fact, the five thousand dollars from N D S U, they have to have it spent by June thirtieth. So it's up to the board which system they wanna go with, and if you decide to go with a more costly one, I would, well, either one of them, you're gonna need a motion to amend the I T budget, because we don't have it this in the budget this year. So if you, do you have that chief coming you, are you able to get on the internet?
Yeah, I I'm on it.
I got it.
Seven months on working?
Yeah, that's you.
What do you need?
Basically, I wanna know which system you like to go with and um.
Oh, you mean for the?
The Ivan.
The only one that teaches uh that is, would be Bill Horace, right?
Well, actually, Bill never has, but Mike Leon did it one time.
Leon did it once.
They don't use something like that for the roundup?
They use it for the roundup, but I don't think they have it teaching, it's just they have somebody else come across. And I mean, we could table it to the June second meeting, but that's pretty.
So it's like seven thousand difference here to there, perhaps for difference, and taking one that teaches once a year or the other way around.
Are there other ways for us to utilize it?
The Ivan?
For teaching purposes, are there other departments that could use it if if it was available? Are there other um areas that we could use it for?
I, the only one that I remember, mom, I used it for teaching one, N D S U extension. Like all of our classes that we can launch over it, you can also get us on the web on your computer now, which I've been doing.
Right.
To get my credits, or they'll send you a C D, or.
Right, you know, but if we had a home teaching mechanism, um.
Maybe this would be a good way to teach our township assessors.
I was just thinking, yeah, well, that's what I had in mind.
Think you're gonna go with the seven thousand?
You wanna go with the more expensive unit?
Unless the state, you know, the the if the state's gonna be doing the teaching for their, they just have to, you know, that's the way.
Yeah, they would have.
I G classes go in the state without we do it.
They would have a bigger system.
Already, yeah, yeah.
That's how you can get hold of the classes then, with this.
No, yeah.
But if, for instance, if if Jerry was gonna teach a class online through Ivan.
And they were at different areas.
They were in different places, if they were all sitting at home doing it, would this be?
The seven hundred would be.
Right.
But I don't know if they could sit at home and do it. Ivan site. Like if they were in Benson County, cause Benson has an Ivan site, Cavalier has that inside, and uh most counties have an Ivan site now. Yeah.
Nobody knows how to use it, they don't, they don't yet.
Let's say uh Benson or, let's say Benson County had the Ivan site and they were teaching a class over there for the assessors, then we could pick it up with this.
We could pick it up with either one.
Either one.
Yeah, we just, we just can't teach back to another.
But if we were gonna teach it.
We would have to teach it one.
Then somebody would have to drive to Benson County.
I I would imagine Bismarck's gonna have to be setting up some kind of program, they're gonna educate all these assessors. And oh, Joan Heckman in uh Benson County paper, and Nelson County paper picked it up, it was a cold one. She was pretty perturbed in her article about all of that, right, and it began, gonna be quite a hurdle to clear to get all the assessors educated. And she was very upset that a lot of assessors in her Eddie County were not happy either about through all of this.
Well, it's up, they just don't look to it, that's what I.
Well, that's not a moving line.
No, of course it's not a moving line, but that's what happens, is that they, and if that was their reason for doing it, it worked?
They're also doing a study on it over the next two years, right?
I think it's settled in law, the way I read it already.
I think it's law.
It got to Dakota American, she had quite a couple paragraphs in the bottom.
I thought there was a study going on with that.
What's the number, Paul, fifty-nine, Dan fifty-nine, maybe? Anyway, what's everybody thoughts on that then?
What's the lifespan on this thing?
Well, the last.
They got a couple years or something like that to do the training.
No, I'm talking the system.
The system, um I think the last one we got was two thousand, uh two. No, what did I tell you guys?
Well, thirteen years old. It was something like that, yeah.
So if the last.
Or was it seven years old?
Seven, seventy years.
It was past two thousand two, it was uh.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the year.
Two thousand four, I don't know what happened to the last two off.
Well, the thing is, it's just like a computer. And the speakers are, the, you know, there's some expense in here, that's the speaker system, that was put in when we remodeled, which was in two thousand, two thousand and two thousand one, when we first started this, and that's when we put in the speakers and the ceiling, so.
We were kinda waiting to see what Bill would come up with, Horace?
Yeah, and they came up with five thousand, and then they'll give us half a, half fifty percent of the one-year maintenance. And then the pesticide funds is two thousand they'll give us, and then the insurance, so.
We have to spend that money by the thirty of June?
That's seven thousand dollars, about three of the June.
Yeah.
So we should table this, or you want a motion now?
It's up to you as a board, because I don't know if it's gonna.
They already with the sixteen one, or? No, I think that.
I'm not.
You can't teach, you don't have the opportunity there, or the equipment there to do it, if we, if we get that, you know, we might. Unless, somebody said that the college had one?
The college has Ivan system, we know.
And and they could teach out of there, or?
I don't know, kind of system.
Yes, they can, she sure does.
So.
I mean, I don't.
If we, if we had to.
They use it on a daily basis. Of course, schools in session, I mean, we could do it.
I think we better have a.
I think we should, I think so too.
Seven thousand dollars, we're gonna have to keep things as low as.
Yeah.
But it's.
Uh we don't have anything for this, so we have to come out with their. It it I T is general, and what I would need is a motion to approve whichever system. And then the other question I have is, you know, in the last system we had, we didn't take the three-year support, and we didn't have any issues. And N D S U feels they don't wanna pay any of the support except for the first year, which is the seven fifty-six. So that's another thing I wanna know, do you want the support, cause that's an extra five thousand, five hundred and fifteen fourteen dollars.
If if we have one year's support, we'll probably find out, we get all the bucks out if I can.
So.
I'll make the motion to purchase the real presence group settlement. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll say.
We have a second, any other discussion, questions?
Do you wanna include to amend the I T budget to handle this?
And the I T budget. All right, with the second?
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Ice Lord? Aye. Olson?
Aye.
Ardenz?
Aye.
Laiwon?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that will move into uh new business, approved site authorization, motion to approve, motion to approve the fire operation, Ivan site, new reading baseball machine.
I'll say.
Does that include the panel one?
That's just professional.
Oh, that's a special.
Okay, motion on second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, prove special permit. So the incorporated, Mike side, that's cold, anybody read it? Motion to approve, motion to approve, is there a second?
Sorry.
We have a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Annexation date, or should we skip that, let's put on, do that, approve the special event, whatever you permit for the one that's handling that area. Okay, motion to approve that as well, okay, we have a motion to approve that as a second?
Sorry.
We have a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, go back up, set the annexation date for the Oklahoma Fire District, boy, I don't wanna put your.
This one. Okay, I got a letter from Scott Stewart, he's an attorney out of Linden, and he's handling the Oklahoma Fire District being annexed in, or Highland Center, section one through twenty-four being annexed into the Oklahoma Fire Protection District. Right now, they're not protected by a fire protection district, they are protected by Ed Moore, which is not, they are a fire, but they're private, they're not through milletting dollars. And there were seven people that signed the petition, and it's over sixty percent of the landlords in that district. So the next thing we need to do is approve for him to publish lies and have a hearing. And um Cavalier County had their meeting this morning, and they suggested, Lisa called me, and she's the new county editor, that they would like to have it at eleven-thirty on June sixteenth, the hearing, and we meet at five-thirty that day. So I don't know if you guys, I mean, when I originally talked to her, I wanted it at seven-thirty, because you started at five-thirty. And then they could just call us, because they would do a conference call from their Cavalier County courthouse or our fire com. Because they would have people like their hearing there, and we have people here. So I don't think they would, because most of them live in Ramsey County, Highland Center is in Ramsey, so.
They've only got seven people in the district, they shouldn't be arguing.
Well, seven people is over sixty percent. At over sixty percent, yeah, there is, I think, they call in eleven or twelve people in that section one through twenty-four. So, so it's over the sixty percent, but um I don't think anybody's gonna protest it out, but we still have to have a hearing. He still, he has to publicize it, you know, do the formality.
And we can do it over the.
Yeah, they can call in here and we can do it right home, so I don't know if you wanna come in at eleven-thirty, or if you wanna have your whole meeting. wanna come in at eleven thirty, or if you wanna have your whole meeting, there's nothing on the agenda right now, do you wanna just schedule your second meeting for during the day? Kevin, what do you got going on June sixteenth?
During the day, we're much better, I mean, but it doesn't matter.
What time do they meet at? I take it they must meet at?
They start at eight thirty nine, I think, is what she said, and they would be able to come over a conference call at eleven thirty.
What's the five, what do you wanna do? I haven't got any problems with changing the time.
I guess to change the time, so we can hear all that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I don't wanna do it twice while we're.
Come back, yeah, I don't think anybody would wanna either.
Jay would.
Or they said if you guys don't agree with it, they could call, have to come back, and they wouldn't meet with, they would come in at seven thirty.
Commission.
Cavalier, yeah.
We could, we could possibly maybe start at ten or something like that, and then just accept their call, and.
Go through, because we don't have a lot, there's nothing on the agenda so far.
I was gonna suggest eleven.
Can we try nine?
Let's try, let's try nine a.m.
In the past, that's one of the meetings that we've actually, it's not half.
Sometimes not half.
The second one in June is, it's, it's mostly.
So if we start at nine, we can suggest ten thirty or eleven, whatever you guys so choose.
We can't get this on the second?
No, no, there's not a publication time. Yeah. You have to publication twice.
Okay, nine o'clock?
We're gonna start at nine, but what time do you want the hearings?
At ten thirty.
At ten thirty?
Oh, God, that's, that'll hold that long.
Ten?
Ten, yeah, ten o'clock.
Ten?
I don't wanna sit there for it.
No, we're not gonna have a long.
We don't have a bunch of time.
Okay, then let's change it.
Three, nine or ten, got that going.
Nine o'clock on the sixteenth.
Okay.
We're.
Louise, got that?
Got it.
Okay, we're done with that.
Okay, so we just need a motion.
Oh, also, who's gonna be meeting at nine a.m., and who's coming at ten a.m.?
I'll say.
Motion and second, that effect, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, announcements, any announcements? I did have a question for Kevin.
We skipped, we skipped.
We gotta have a.
Skip over this contract, so you're just going ahead with this, right?
Contract.
For the weight limit permits?
Oh, weight limits.
Oh, I'm still working on that.
Okay, okay, I was just.
Yeah.
You said all this, I, I better ask him about it.
Everyone to look at those.
Okay, I just thought, we're.
Um, how the other counties, they're handling their permit process for overweights and overwits and.
I figured you were still working.
Yeah, that's gonna be a few months away. There was a bill in the legislation to handle the oil producing counties, so it's gonna move this way.
I just can't believe how cheap they are.
I know.
That's hardly worth your time with the paper.
Yeah.
Well, evidently we aren't gonna pay them actually the permit.
No.
No, not even the five.
We gotta back up to one more thing, a new business there, approved, proposal for the court facility grant.
Yes.
Vertical lines.
Uh, we have two proposals, and.
Jumping ahead and watching the clock.
I have plan four here, we received two proposals, one was from Lamont's Painted Glass for one thousand three hundred and seventy three, and Thompson's for one thousand four twenty three eighty five, so the little bit was Lamont, so I just need a motion to accept the little bit from Lamont's Painted Glass.
Second, motion and second to cut to Lamont's bid for, uh, uh, blinds at the court.
Yep, and this is the court facility grant, which we pay the whole thing, and then we get seventy five percent back from the state.
So that's the whole bill, that thirteen, so that's?
That's, the whole bill is one thousand three seventy three, so now that.
That's like two hundred and fifty bucks, something like that.
Very little, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Hi, sir.
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Laiwon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Announcements, any other announcements?
I have one, just a, um, food for thought, you guys wanna decide when you want your surplus property for the next meeting, that you gotta.
Man, come up to a lot and look at the cars.
You got a lot?
Oh, my, no.
Some of them there got advertised for the.
They told me last year it was twenty over there.
I thought it, there's probably seventeen, sixteen or seventeen.
So which ones?
It's gonna take us three hours to move around them.
I thought the drug shop was gonna take care of that, right?
They are, some three, others seventeen or whatever's there.
That's all we sell?
Yeah.
We gotta hang on to the rest of them till the paperwork's done?
Sure, I guess, I don't know.
No, I'm not sure where they.
It's a mess.
What month did we do it last year?
I think we did a second meeting in July, or a second meeting in August, I can check.
Rest of the July, 'cause I bought a lot more. I used a lot.
Well, let's do it the same as we did it before, just for, probably.
We hired an auctioneer, I'm not very good. Let the vice chair do that.
Yeah, we got some chairs, some social services cabinets, um, we got some of those chairs, but they're individual ones.
All kinds of buildings, huh?
Yeah.
Kind of, with wooden decks.
You gonna have this all done by then, so you can put all this stuff in there?
Oh, looks good. Only here, you'll have a couple times a month.
What's my idea? Look at me.
Any other announcements?
That's your wife, you don't have to chew me off.
There you go, my way, that's for sure. No other announcements, we're done. Motion to approve.
Sure.
That's it.